All right, I've got 5:45. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand for the moment of silence, then we'll have the pledge.
Do the flag, United States of America. And see the Republican Party, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Recorder, if you'd call the roll.
Chairman Floyd.
Present.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Present.
Deborah Thomas.
Present.
Jeremy Burnett.
Michelle Childs.
Here.
Superintendent Horrell.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to lead us through our agenda?
I would. The first item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment. And as we discussed last week at our work session, we have given citizens the opportunity to submit public comments via email. I did not receive any public comments that wished to be read.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is the reports section, starting with the chairman's welcome.
Well, I would like to welcome everyone to our second digital meeting. We're still working our way through the social distancing requirements that are all related to COVID-19, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we move forward. We specifically like to thank Dr. Wanda Terrell for helping us coordinate and make all these things happen. I thought last week went very well and look forward to another meeting as we move forward in this new era. That concludes my report. Next item.
Thank you. Next report is the TLN representatives update.
Hi, okay. So bear with me for a few minutes because a lot happened since the last time we had an update. So the General Assembly, the biggest bill that was put out was one that addressed the current COVID-19 situation. HB 2818, SB 2672 basically addressed all the concerns that we had about the school closures. So the typical mandatory testing at the end of the school year is all waived. TCAP testing, 10-ready, EOC exams, all this is waived. Student growth measures will not be generated from TCAP assessments. Teachers won't be using, it won't, the assessments that couldn't be done aren't going to be used to grade them. Same with pretty much any type of evaluation the teacher would be using, it's not going to be used this year. TCAP scores won't be included in students' final grades. So on and so forth. No civics, all these things have been waived. The 180-day instructional day requirement is waived. The ACT graduate is waived. So then, after that happened as well, the State Board of Education met and gave, on April 9th last week, and gave a little bit more guidance on exactly how that's going to look, and I think even more guidance is to come on that. Okay. Oh, also, so basically grades will end as of March 20th unless schools choose to have grading done, but if they do, then the grading can't negatively impact students and it can only positively impact them. And attendance cannot be mandatory for, if people are having score right now for Tennessee. Okay, so the bills that had been happening before, that we were following and interested in, these are the outcomes we have so far. There was SB 2717 that involved reciprocity for teachers in other states. It was pending when the legislature temporarily closed down. And I should have mentioned that from the beginning, actually. The legislature ended the session on March 19th, and they're scheduled to reconvene on June 1st to address the remaining bills and officially conclude the 111th General Assembly. So when they broke for this COVID-19 break, the teacher reciprocity bill was pending. However, the State Board of Education that met last week addressed this, so I think most, if not all, the things that were trying to be done through that bill have been addressed. Then we had concerns about the bill with the alternative school being on the same campus and there not being a provision for if you don't have another campus, and that bill, there's no changes, no amendments, it's continued to be pending. There was also a bill we were concerned about PE and how the PE requirements were going to look. And that bill, it did pass, but when I talked to TSBA, Garrett Kinsley, he says that it doesn't have any traction, so it looks like that might not be a bill that makes it out. And then there was also a bill about recalling school board members and no other legislative elected people, and that one is still pending. And then there was the bill HB 2869 that involved any school district would have to take a student from another school district, and we were concerned about that one. However, that one is dead, so it's not no longer pending for when the legislature meets back. So I think I covered the ones we were tracking and the new things that happened, but please let me know if you have a question about any of that.
Very good. Any questions on the TLN report? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Childs. Dr. Horrell.
All right, next item is the superintendent's report and financial report. I gave a thorough superintendent's report at the work session, but do want to add, we had some good questions come up about course selection for the middle school students in particular. And as I said at the last meeting, those plans were in progress, and in fact, I think we're just days away from those going live. In fact, there was, and some updates have been sent out to parents that hopefully we're reassuring that that information is coming soon, and I feel confident it'll be released before the end of the week. And in fact, the only reason they weren't released today was just the desire to check just a couple more things, since they're trying something that is technical and something that is new, and that is doing the course selection through Skyward. They've been done through a separate sheet in the past and wanted to take advantage of the capabilities of Skyward, which would allow those selections to populate directly into the student schedule potentially. Another thing that that will do, and we hope will be a positive effect, is that middle school parents will have to do the registration process, which sounds obvious, before they can do the course selection. So we're hoping that that will encourage some of the middle school parents to go ahead and complete the returning student registration. We are brainstorming ways to get additional students to participate in the new student registration. That's obviously a harder group to reach because we don't know who they are, particularly if they are parents that don't have siblings in the schools, but we are going to continue to work hard to make sure we get those numbers. The good news is, we do get a head start. Some districts don't even do any sort of registration until the summer, but the things that we have now is, happening now is that the attendance operators are calling returning students to get their intentions, or those families to get their intentions for next year, and then we're going to increase our outreach and try to brainstorm ways to let others know that it is time to pre-register if they're planning on coming. So those are important things that are happening. I have a lot of good things happening in the schools even that I didn't mention last time, one of which is, I know our guidance counselors and EL teachers in particular, and Kim Pickens, who works in student services, has spent a tremendous amount of time trying to connect families with resources that they need for, in different, really a variety of situations. So just another way that our public schools are serving the kids and their families during this time. Got some good updates in our call today just regarding kind of nuts and bolts of assessment things. We had tests that shipped to us. Obviously, we're not giving those tests, and you know, what does that look like and how do we get those back? We are starting to have conversations about the potentiality of not returning to school. That decision hasn't been made yet, and we're kind of, as I said last week, kind of relying on the governor's guidance in terms of school recommendations for school closures, but we are starting to have conversations on, in terms of returning Chromebooks, in terms of students picking up personal items from their lockers, and even teachers picking up personal items. What might those things look like, and even some of our end-of-the-year procedures, what are some alternatives for those? I know there have been a lot of questions about the eighth-grade promotion ceremony in particular. We did hear from Bellevue Baptist Church and the organizers, they have not yet canceled those, but they are kind of, I think preemptively saying, if we do have to cancel these, we're just asking that everybody work with us in terms of rescheduling because they're usually spread out over some time, and if they're trying to get everybody's, if it's even possible, let me say, if it's even possible to make up these kind of ceremonies, they're saying, just, you know, please work with us because we may have to look at some different types of scheduling if that happens. So just to be clear, there haven't been any decisions made regarding that, but we are kind of moving forward with planning for the possibility that we don't return because we have to, we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best is kind of where we are. On the financial report, we have posted and shared with the board, the financial update. Everything right now is still trending, we're not really, you know, yeah, it'll probably be the next one where we see kind of the impacts for things that we're not paying for that we normally would have been. We can expect that electrical bills would be a little lower for the time that we're out. We do, we use an energy management system that allows us to set the school up, so obviously we're not using the same levels of electricity that we do when schools are in session and several other things like that, that would be potential savings, I suppose, but as of right now, our current budget is where it should be. So if there are any questions, I'll certainly do my best to answer.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, we will move to the next item. Thank you, Dr. Horrell.
Oh, you're welcome. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Ms. Harrison, a second from Ms. Childs. Are there any additions or that anybody would like to make to the agenda? Hearing none, and because we're doing this and we haven't voted electronically yet, Madam Recorder, we might need to do everything by a roll call because I don't know how else we'll electronically record how everyone voted.
Sure.
So if you would call the roll.
Okay. Chairman Floyd.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Deborah Thomas. I think we left, lost.
We just lost Deborah.
She got disconnected.
Okay. I'll come back to her. Michelle Childs.
Yes.
We do have three I's. Hopefully Ms. Thomas will join us shortly, but that's enough to approve the agenda and move to the next item, Dr. Horrell.
All right, the next item is our consent agenda. It has four items on it, the approval of the business meeting minutes from March 9th, the approval of the FY 1920, which is this year budget amendment, discussion action on the capital improvement plan, and discussion action on approval of the spring discard list.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Ms. Harrison, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Childs. Are there any items anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, Madam Recorder, if you would give us a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I think I froze.
That's okay, you're back.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
Yep, on the consent agenda.
Yes. Chairman Floyd.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Deborah Thomas.
Yes.
Michelle Childs.
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved unanimously, so we will move to the next item.
The next item is, and this is just, I guess, a business note, is it appropriate to have Ms. Thomas record her vote on the approval of the agenda? It's probably not necessary, obviously, it was 3-0, but since she faded out for a moment.
It's not necessary, but Ms. Thomas, we'd love for you to cast your vote on the approval of the agenda.
I approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'd say yes, I just figured we would. Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. We now move into the discussion items. The first one is discussion action on approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Ms. Harrison, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Ms. Thomas. Dr. Horrell, would you like to speak to this item?
I would. First of all, I want to thank the board members for your questions and engagement, both during the budget presentation, which handled a lot of the questions frankly, and the conversations that I had afterwards. And I just do want to say for the record, this board, just historically and certainly currently, is always very engaged with and attuned to what is happening financially, and this board pays attention to things regarding the budget throughout the year and makes sure that I'm accountable for the budget, make sure that our system is being appropriately accountable for the taxpayer dollars that we're spending. So I want to thank the board for your fiscal responsibility and your engagement in this process, so I thank you. The second thing I wanted to say is I did make an error in my PowerPoint presentation, and basically I included two things that were both part of the budget conversations that we had, and then once we resolved those things, I neglected to take one out. It was just a memory lapse on my part. And basically, we had discussed at Principal Adler's request, the addition of a math interventionist position, and had some conversations internally about, you know, if that position was justified and if that was the best way to approach that, and we discussed at some point, well, if we had a shared position between the middle school and the elementary school, that may justify the extra position. And then as I was kind of looking at our projections and the teacher allocations, what I realized was, Matt was so close to having an additional position allocated anyway, what we decided in a conversation was that we would give him that third new teacher position, and then if he wanted to use that for math intervention or basically whatever, we leave that at the principal's discretion, how to use it, that that would be appropriate. So I should have removed the math interventionist basically from the slide. The budget is accurate, the numbers in the budget, but my list of the additions was inaccurate, so I apologize for any confusion there. I have shared that with the board members, but just wanted to share that publicly, the principals are aware, and just wanted to clear that up. The other thing I wanted to add, that was a good question that came up, is thanks to, in particular to Ms. Millspar, HR Director's leadership, and also through the urging of Mr. Adler at the middle school. We have made a number of adjustments to the stipends for our coaches and sponsors, and we are finalizing basically exactly what that looks like. In fact, it's, you could just about call it final, but I just want to have a couple more conversations with Mr. Adler in particular. But it did result in a significant increase, I'd say fairly significant increase, to the coaching stipends line item, and I wanted to highlight that because I had not highlighted that in the presentation either. But the coaching stipend line items, the budget for last year was $10,000, and the coaching stipends budget that we're submitting for 2021 is $60,000. So that is a significant, obviously, increase, and probably should have been highlighted in my presentation last year. It's something we're excited about for a long, long, long time. I think I can say it generally, public school coaches in particular have really been just paid a pittance to do things that take up hours and hours and hours of their time outside of school, and everybody can think of examples of this, certainly head football coaches, head baseball coaches, assistant baseball coaches, cheerleading and Palm sponsors, certainly depending on the circumstances, put in a lot of time and aren't compensated appropriately. So we're trying to do something about that, and what we've got is a system that would pay coaches, depending on the level of responsibility, a percentage of basically what we used as the starting teacher salary. So it wouldn't be based on their salary, because if you're, if you're the head football coach, it doesn't really matter if you've been doing it, you know, teaching for a year or 15 years, you're still putting in the hours. So we feel really good about that approach. It does take, again, a substantial additional investment from the board, but we're in a good position to do it and feel like it's what our coaches and sponsors deserve. So I did want to point that out as really the second thing, that was an omission, I think, that should have been discussed last week, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Horrell. Any questions for the superintendent? Any discussion on this item, the budget as a whole? Hearing none, Madam Recorder, can we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Floyd.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Deborah Thomas.
Yes.
Michelle Childs.
Yes.
The budget has been approved. Thank you, Dr. Horrell, for your hard work on this item.
Well, thank you, and let me again recognize Jesse Rosales, my finance director, and Jessica Millspar, the HR Director, who do a whole lot of heavy lifting. Ms. Rosales leads the process and does a tremendous job, so thanks to both of them. Next item is discussion action on, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I know, I'm supposed to raise my hand. Can you just kind of step through how it'll work in the new world with the budget, because I know it has to go to BOC, so will you participate in their meeting electronically to present our budget as a portion theirs, because I know that's something new? Has that been discussed yet, or at least can you let everybody know how that's supposed to proceed?
Sure, I'll start with how it generally proceeds, since a lot of people don't know it. Our board, our budget for the school system winds up being integrated into the overall school system, I'm sorry, the overall city of Lakeland budget. From their perspective, it's considered a city fund, even though we have an independent board, obviously, and we operate independently, and they don't have, you know, line item authority or anything like that. It is a fund of the city technically, and so typically, once we do our approval, we will submit it immediately to Michael Walker, their finance director, so that he can make that happen. And then usually, I'll make an appearance at their board meeting and just present a similar overview to what I presented to you guys, just kind of hitting the big picture. I will certainly make myself available to do that electronically again, and really, it's at their discretion. They could say, no thanks, or they could say, yes, please, or some combination thereof, but that will definitely be on the table. And I'm happy to do it. Yep.
Next item.
Okay, next item is discussion action on approval of the FY 2021 salary schedules. This is also posted to the website, and it's been shared.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Horrell, would you like to speak to this item?
I will. So this is where we typically operationalize what winds up being, you know, between 60 and 70% of the budget anyway, and that is salaries. So in addition to the teacher salary schedule, it also includes individual salaries and step sheets as appropriate for the other positions in Lakeland School System. This is Lakeland School System Board Policy Requirement to Approve the Salary Schedules Themselves, and they are presented to you.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Madam Recorder, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chairman Floyd.
Present.
Vice Chair, was that a yes?
I said present, and the answer should be yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Bound to happen.
Yes, yes.
Deborah Thomas.
Yes.
Michelle Childs.
We do have, the motion passes. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on approval of policy 5.3051. That's FF-CRA Leave, and I do want to point out, this is a brand-new policy that is a result, a direct result of the COVID-19 situation, and Lakeland School System policy requires two readings on new policies. A work session can count as one, but we did not have this on our work session agenda, and, but we also have a policy that says in certain situations, the board can waive the second reading as appropriate. So I'm just putting that out there on top of this agenda.
So let's handle these items one at a time. First, is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Ms. Harrison, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Ms. Childs, the item's properly before us. Let's see, is there any discussion on this item first?
Well, I can give background on the item itself, if that's.
Yes, please, Dr. Horrell.
Yeah, so this is the FF-CRA, is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and it's obviously new federal legislation. And basically, what it does is it clarifies some of the federal requirements for paid sick leave and FMLA leave specifically, that may relate to be impacted by COVID-19 and specifically employees or their family members that get COVID-19. What I can say is that as soon as this legislation became public, HR directors were made aware, and Ms. Millspar, true to form, made sure that we were in compliance with this legislation. We did decide, a model policy was released by TSBA, and we decided that, as we typically do, it would be appropriate to go ahead and include this in our policy manual, especially since we had a meeting that was just coming up. So this really doesn't change anything that we're doing because we're going to comply with federal law anyway. It's just a policy that kind of codifies it, would be a best practice to go ahead and pass.
And can I say something as well?
Please do, please do.
Just pointing out that this would expire December 31st. This policy automatically expires December 31st.
Thank you.
Would it require any action on our part? Would we have to rescind the policy, or does the way it's worded automatically rescind itself?
The first line of the policy says that it will be in effect from April 1st, 2020, until December 31st, 2020.
Any further?
I think in the past, when we had a policy that only lasted for two years, did we have to take action still to go in and actually rescind it? I believe we did. I don't know if it was just a formality, or we had had to specifically do that, so I just wasn't sure whether we would have to do that with this as well.
I think we, and I can, I know the policy you're talking about, and that was the one about grandfathered students in the system. We did rescind that, however, I don't, well, it's not I don't believe, I know the language wasn't as direct as this language. To me, and Eric, you may have, our attorney Eric Fulmer may have a different opinion, I believe the first line of this one would make me comfortable to say that administratively we could just remove it once it expires. It's obviously the will of the board and the federal law, it would expire as well. But we could certainly make a note to bring it up at our January meeting as well. It's just a matter, you know, bookkeeping, I think.
Right, okay.
Ms. Thomas.
And similarly, it would, it would be amended if it needed to exist longer, if coronavirus is still around and still, we still need to make some provisions for people who are affected by it, right?
Yes, I believe that to be true for sure.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Hearing no other discussion, is the board willing to entertain, is there a motion to suspend the rules to pass this policy on the first reading? Let's start there.
I'll move.
We have a motion from Ms. Harrison, is there a second? We have a motion and a second from Ms. Thomas. So the only thing we're voting on right now is suspending the rules to pass the policy on the first reading. So Madam Recorder, would you call the roll on the suspension of rules vote?
Chairman Floyd.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Deborah Thomas.
Yes.
Michelle Childs.
Yes.
All right, the board did vote to suspend the rules, so we're back on the main motion, which is the policy itself. Madam Recorder, if you'd call the roll, and we'll vote on the policy.
Chairman Floyd.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Deborah Thomas.
Yes.
Michelle Childs.
Yes.
The motion was approved, the policy has been passed. Uh, the motion was approved. The policy has been passed on the first reading. So, Dr. Horrell, we'll move to the next item.
All right, the next item, uh, is, is just for record keeping and that is the review of policy manual section six. Uh, Ms. Thomas did give me some, some good notes with a couple of good questions that we're going to get, uh, answered for her. Uh, but for the time being, none of them required any, uh, immediate policy, um, action. So again, we're grateful for the work of Ms. Thomas and the policy committee, but, uh, we just have on record that we have now reviewed, uh, section six.
Very good. Would any board member like to speak to this item?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, Dr. Horrell.
Uh, there are no further items on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any announcements?
Nope.
Ms. Thomas.
Go ahead.
Um, most people are aware and I just wanted to draw attention to it, how much our teachers are missing our kids and how much our kids are missing our teachers. And if you haven't had the opportunity to see the virtual parades of the teachers, um, on Facebook, they've, they've put a lot of time and effort into letting the kids know that everything's okay and that they miss them. And I just want to say again, that speaks to who we have, you know, in front of those kids every day. And, um, I just wanted to say thanks to our teachers.
Again, thank you. Uh, those comments are certainly well taken. Uh, any other announcements?
I, I, I will make one announcement and then I'll, I'll send Ms. Childs to two. I'm sorry, I don't think we mentioned that, uh, Mr. Burnett had let us know in advance that he would, uh, not be available for this meeting. Um, and, uh, had a, had a personal issue that he was attending to, so I just wanted to, to mention that, uh, that, 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 that was a, a planned absence that he let us know well in advance.
Very good. Thank you for reminding us. Ms. Childs.
Yeah, I think it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but we did just get the information on, you know, the, you may not can see it, but, um, the maps, course choices and exploratory course choices for the middle school. So, um, those just came out, so for parents to review those with their students and, um, you know, look at, uh, registering for next school year or you won't be able to do the, uh, course selection at a school you're not registered for. So just another announcement on that.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or announcements? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't hear any. We are adjourned. Everybody have a good day.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.